I'd like to call the meeting over. Would you join and rise as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Dennis, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda? Thank you. Public comments. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board of Education at this time? Board member comments? Do we have any board members who wish to make a comment at this time?
I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of attending the Special Olympics a couple of weeks ago. Cam and I were able to go, Dr. Calvin and Michelle and Joe, at North Rose Wolka. And it was just such a fantastic event. And our students did such an amazing job. And what a privilege it is to be able to go and be supportive of the students. And it was, one of the interesting parts that I didn't know is we have a program here at the high school, I believe it's a club called TIES, which is together including every student. And to have our Special Olympians have a partner from the school with them all day and just be supportive and they have a relationship with them the entire school year. Just really what a special thing to know and see what's happening. And just really a big thanks to everybody who works with our special education kids every day. It shows their love, they're taken care of, and some parents who came as well. So I just wanted to let you know what a great time it was.
Thank you. Do we have any other board members? Dennis?
Just like to say congratulations to Phil, Carla, and Tim on your reelection to the board. And I'd like to thank the public for supporting our budget.
Any other board member comments? If not, then let's go to the superintendents report.
Thank you. Good evening, board. A couple highlights we'll start out with tonight. First, just the middle school students, you know, aside from the great work that they do in terms of academically, our kids are just really always having these bright spots. And one happened recently with several middle school students made some science for the Ontario Volunteer Emergency Squad. A couple of students, just want to mention them, Richie Casano, Anthony French, Travis Ernest, Byron Sills, Chris Lawson, and Patrick Embry. Just really kids who are doing some extra in the community to demonstrate the commitment to our community. And part of our strategic plan, when we look at our new mission and vision, it talks about helping to prepare students and groom students to be contributing members to their community. And this already occurring, really great work. Also, I wanted to highlight and congratulate the wonderful cast and crew of our recent play, Legally Blonde. They were winners of the outstanding musical production, outstanding acting ensemble, outstanding dance ensemble, outstanding singing ensemble, and outstanding crew award that was recently given to only very few in the city or in the Monroe County area, basically for schools that were doing a great job around school plays this year. So really proud of the kids and want to congratulate them as well. Very good, very, very excited. Wanting to shift gears now. Tonight, we've had an opportunity to see some of the things that we're doing around technology and some of the things we'd like to do in the future. And so I'm going to ask Barb Hill to come up tonight and to share with us and provide a technology update for us tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight. The kids were really excited to just have conversations with you. And they practiced and practiced. It really was cute. They really had a nice time. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. So I'm here to give you a technology update specific to Smart Schools, the Smart Schools grant and how we're going to be utilizing or what we'd like to propose to utilize those funds for the next school year. But before I do, I wanted to share something that Scott Bishop had shared with, from Bosie's, who shared with us, the technology directors, a few weeks ago. And what he said to us was, today it's more than simply increasing the use of technology, it's leveraging change in student learning with the use of technology. So it's not really, we're making a shift, and I think all districts are, from how much do we have, what do we have, and what are we getting, to why? Why do we have it and why, why are we getting? The why is right here, and you saw it with the kids in the library. Those, our kids are now Generation Z, I-Gen. You may be familiar with that. It's fairly new. But the research shows that our students today, they're born digital. You know that. Look at the baby up in the corner. I mean, that is happening right now. They're microminers, meaning they dig deep. They find out for themselves the answers to questions. They're not going to wait for us. They go off to YouTube. They'll go to YouTube to find out how to put their bicycle chain on their bike this summer. They're not going to wait for mom and dad to show them, right? And we need to provide the devices for them to do that. They're super collaborative. You saw with Mr. Harris's group how they were collaborating, but they were all at their own Chromebook, right? They're globally aware. They like feedback every day, not just every day, but throughout the day. And that's another way that we can provide is through Google Drive, which is another way. There were a few students that were showing Google Drive. They have a sense of mission and purpose. They need to know why they're doing what they're doing. Our Generation G-Z kids need to be critical thinkers, communicators, collaborators, and creators. We know that. We've been talking about 21st century learning skills for a little while now. Now the kids are living it. So how are we going to, what devices are we going to provide these kids to make them successful? Well, at Wayne, what the future and the next year means, Google Platform. More one-to-one technology. We're moving in that direction, and I'll share a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Technology at home, virtual field trips, online learning, SAMR. That's our instructional model that we use, that we are trying to get better at with making sure that technology is teaching and learning focused. The why, not the what. And robotics, which you saw a bunch of that, too. So our proposed items for this next school year with the Smart Schools grant is to start working on our Wi-Fi upgrade, school security with camera and systems upgrade, and devices for the kids, iPads, Chromebooks, Chrome boxes, and then 70-inch interactive touchscreens. And I'll talk, I'll speak to that a little bit, too.
What's the Chrome box?
I'm going to show you that in a few minutes. Three more slides. Chromebooks. So right now, in the 15, 16th school year, all of our 7th and 8th grade students, when they walk into ELA or Social Studies, they have a Chromebook in their hand. That's our way of moving forward with one-to-one. Also, and I forgot to put up there, and I apologize to Mr. Harris, in the foreign language classroom in 8th grade, and his 7th grade students, too, he has a Chromebook card. We have a Chromebook card in the high school for research, and we provide some one-to-one devices for students with special needs who are in need of that. Next year, we're going to expand on that. We're going to add 6th grade for the ELA and Social Studies Initiative. We're going to add 6th graders, and we're going to add 9th graders. So that our current 8th graders, when they head into the high school, they're not going to go backwards. They're going to stay and have the same experience that they do now. We're going to add, in the high school, a loan program where students can borrow Chromebooks and take them home for the weekend or take them home periodically when they need to.
Just to help me understand, ELA and Social Studies classrooms, they have Chromebooks. You said when they walk into the room, they get a Chromebook.
They do.
When they walk out of the room, what happens?
They put it back on the cart.
Okay. It's not something that we provide them throughout the day?
Correct. Because right now, we're focusing on the curriculum. So the curriculum is written, and the planning is taking place, and a lot of professional development for those teachers to make sure that those Chromebooks are used in the curriculum for ELA and Social Studies. And then we'll start moving, and you'll see, in a few minutes, I'm going to speak to where we're going to start doing it in math for the 5th grade, and then we'll start building that up as well. So we're kind of coming at it at both ends.
Is it assigned to them? Is it, do they have to always get the same computer? Does they enter stuff into it? Or is it just for visualization, and then they wipe it clean and put it back in the cart?
What's nice about the Chromebooks is you literally turn it on, and it's about eight seconds to boot up, and they go right to their Google Drive. So there's nothing on the hard drive.
That answers the question.
And Google Drive is like in the cloud? So no matter what computer you get on, you get right on it?
So now if a student wanted to bring their own computer into their classroom, you know, as far as a Chromebook, they could do that, too?
Sure, sure. What's nice about the Chromebooks are, they are, with the licensing and everything, it's about $340 apiece, as opposed to an $800 laptop. Three-year refresh cycle, meaning we'll replace them every three years. Military-grade specs, they are tough, little buggers. We've tested some, and we've moved to a different model because these ones are spill-proof, the keyboard and the mouth, the touchpad. They also have 180-degree hinge, so they'll open right up. And you could slam them back together, and even with a pen in it, and it won't crack the screen. We tried it. We had a couple injuries this year with our current model. And they're touchscreen as well. So let's move on to iPads and what we're doing with iPads. We have iPads in the kindergarten grades right now, five per classroom, because that's how they, they work in groups, and they move from instructional activity to instructional activity. We have carts at the K-5 level. In the high school, they're trialing them out for flipped classroom experience in math. And we provide them one-to-one for special needs students as well. Next year, we're planning on adding to first grade and doing, having the same experience for first graders. So those kindergarters going into first grade will have the same experience. We're adding more carts to those math programs because they've deemed it, you know, an effective tool to use, and we'll continue with the one-to-one. The iPads are going to be a four-year refresh cycle or replacement, and they run about $500 apiece. Chrome boxes, this is something new.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why iPads rather than Chromebooks?
It really has proven to be, we gave it to the teachers and said curriculum-wise, what device works best for you? It turned out to be at the primary level, and this is consistent with other school districts, they're finding that at the primary level, the apps and just the ease of the iPad is much better for the little ones. And then the high school math teachers has nothing to do, obviously, they're not little ones, but they just found that those apps were just more appropriate for what they were trying to do. Again, they're looking at curriculum-based.
So it's more because of the software that's available to form?
Yeah. And with an iPad, you can still go to Google Drive and do everything Google with an iPad. That's what's nice about Google Drive. So Chrome boxes are just like Chromebooks, only they can replace a computer. So for about $360, or $260, we have a Chrome box. It's literally about this big, a monitor, a regular keyboard, and a mouse if you'd like. So we're going to start incorporating those as well, only because of the boot-up time. It's like eight seconds, literally. When you turn on a regular computer, there's three or four minutes of instruction where you're waiting for it to come on. At the primary level, we're going to try touch monitors. Developmentally, I mean, I kind of made a joke to somebody down there. There was a box of mice, oh, it was Matt, and I said, what are these? And it's true. Our kindergarten, first, and second graders, how often do they use a mouse? So we don't want the mouse to hinder any of the instructional work that they're trying to do. So with a touchscreen, it'll remove that obstacle. The 70-inch interactive touchscreens, this is what we are going to plan on doing in replacing our smart board systems as they start failing. We're not going to take them down unless they're failing, or if they're just not doing what they need to do. We have about 11 projectors left, like those that we've been using as a replacement when projectors fail. But now our boards are starting to fail. And if you think about it, it's, they're, some are almost 10 years old, our boards. So we're going to start replacing with those. They have a 60,000-hour lifespan, a regular monitor. You don't have, the room lighting, you don't have to turn the lights down to dim the lights because the projector is not quite bright enough. You know how it isn't here sometimes when you've used it? So we're looking forward to that, and so are our teachers. So that so far is, those are our plans for what we'd like to do with this first round of our Smart Schools funds. A few more updates. We have a lot going on and a lot of updates. So just briefly, I just want everybody to be aware of what is happening. Power School is changing to school tool. Power School is our student information system. Our email will be switching to Gmail over the summer. We're going to continue with Google Drive and encouraging that for teaching and learning. At the same time, our Office, we're upgrading that to 2016. So we're going to continue with Office. We'll have a hybrid environment for the tool, the most appropriate tool for the task. Smart Notebook is the software that teachers use in the classroom with their smart boards, and we're upgrading that as well. Subservice is going to be upgraded. Our financial management system is going to be upgraded. Teachscape is our evaluation software. That's being upgraded. And some of these upgrades are just by the nature of, the program itself is, you know, changing the name and upgrading. We're looking at my learning plan as opposed to using the duplicate copy conference forms. And math expressions online is just a new component with the new math program. Our technology committee, this is last, we're going to be focusing on, and we're right in line with the new district strategic plan of creating a technology scope and sequence, which helps us to really talk about the why we're using the technology. And then we'll be building upon our current tech plan to make it more comprehensive. That was a lot of information in five minutes. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. When you go from Outlook to Gmail, what will it look like to us?
It will look like, right now, I believe you use webmail. Gmail looks very similar to that. And we'll do some-
But what about our existing folders and our existing documents and all the stuff that we've got put away nicely somewhere?
Good question. We're going to move everything you have and put it right into Gmail. And I know it works because I've done it, and now I'm working in Gmail. And it's, everything came right over, all my files, folders, and everything.
Barb, how do we secure if, for loss, if Chromebooks are going to go home? How is that going to be tracked? How are finances, if it's stolen, lost, whatever? How is that going to, how are those funds going to be recouped? Especially with families that maybe aren't in a financial situation to repay the school for, you know? Because sometimes I've seen it over the years where, even with tracking of textbooks, you know, they're a couple hundred dollars, too, and we don't track that as well as what we should in some respects. And I just, you know, you give a kid a brand-new Chromebook to take home for a weekend, and it doesn't ever come back. How, what plans do you have to secure that?
So if I can, you want to, I was going to answer. So those are all questions that we'll need to be sitting down and talking through over the next year, figuring that out. So many schools today have been going to the one-to-one technology. And we know textbooks, materials, all those things are online. So if kids are really going to be able to use that technology in the classroom, it has to be able to carry over at home. Let me share with you that my last district, we had a one-to-one technology initiative. We allow kids to take the Chromebooks home, allow them to use them for homework and activities. We have very few, and most schools will tell you, they have very few kids who broke the Chromebook or lost. They look at them like, almost like they're, they're special computer, I got it for myself. And it's like the Apple computers at home, kids, they hold them like with great pride, and they watch them very closely. You probably will have some people who drop them by mistake, right? And we have that now in our school. We may have a laptop where kids use it, and they drop it on the floor by accident, right? So what do we do? We take it, we fix it, repair it. If there's somebody who's really doing something to hurt it intentionally, then we respond appropriately with the parents. But that whole piece, we haven't quite ironed out yet, but we will bring it back to the board so that you know our procedures and what we plan to do. But eventually, what we'd like to see is kids taking, using it as really a resource for research, for homework, for activities, and taking that home and bringing it back, which is what many of the schools are doing now. So we'll have to figure all those questions out and answer those before we do that, basically.
Right. And I was going to say, we have a current policy in place now because we have over 211 or 12 one-to-one devices now already that go back and forth and go home with kids. So we have a policy that works for that. Now, we're talking a bigger magnitude, so I think we'd have to build upon that. But we do have where there's a loan request form, there's parent permission. So we have, we have a pretty good process in place. And I haven't, I think I've had one in the 10 years I've been involved in the department in this, you know, respect anyway, where I've had one that was lost, and we replaced it.
So we already have a small pilot going. We already have a small pilot that's going.
Yes.
But we haven't done NASA yet. Any questions about, if anyone else?
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, board, so now shifting gears, continuing with the curriculum and instruction. We're going to have Joe come down, excuse me, Dr. Syracuse. And also, we have Chelsea, I want to say this right, Eaton, am I correct? All right. Chelsea is our math coordinator for the district along. Her and Joe have been working closely this year. We have been doing a new pilot around mathematics and looking at our curriculum and where do we go next with math. So they're going to share a little bit about math. Let me just bag it a little bit as they're getting prepared. A couple of things that you heard Barb talk about. One was the whole SAMR scale. When we think about technology, what we want to do is make sure that we look at and think about that whole SAMR piece. The SAMR scale, if you're not familiar with it, has four different levels of it when you think about technology. The first level is, in this acrostic, is S, and it talks about substitution. And many people use technology as a form of substitution. So rather than have a calculator, they use the iPad as a calculator. Rather than get a dictionary, they use it as, use iPad as a dictionary, right? The second level is augmentation, where we may have a couple of apps in there, do a couple of things a little bit different. And then the last portion on the scale is an R that says redefinition, okay? Where people actually use technology to redefine what it is that they have learned. So if you give a child, for example, the task of World War I or World War II to learn about it, they go in, they use the computer for research, and then they come back and create a documentary or some kind of, they can do a podcast, and we tell you in their own way, using technology, what it is that I've learned. So what we want to do around Chromebooks and the iPads and all these different things is we want to redefine using that scale. We want to redefine learning using technology with our kids. So we don't want them just to use the technology as a substitute. We want them to really be able to tell us in their own way and show us and demonstrate to us what it is that I've learned using technology tools. So that's one of the things we're working on. And also, why the diversity of equipment? Why an iPad? Why a Chromebook? Why, why the Chromebook? Why the different things? So we know when they leave from here, right? In the real world, our kids are digital citizens, and they need to be prepared to really communicate and use these different types of technologies wherever they go. Because we don't want them just to be, some people are, I'm an iBook totally, right? Or I'm only an Apple Book. But when there's another computer, they freak, right? We want our kids to be able to continue to grow, whatever, given whatever technology they have. And the last piece is, Barb talked about the flipped classroom experience. So this is where you actually give the child a topic, and they go out and research it on their own using technology, and can come back and reteach the whole class using that technology. So we want kids to, she talked about, many of our kids are, they're digging deep. They're going deep in. We want them to do that. So as we move forward with technology, this whole piece that she was talking about, that's where we kind of want to go to. Redefinition, flipped classroom experiences, right? And then kids really digging, excuse me, digging deep using that technology. That's where we're headed, basically. Okay, so I said it up about technology. I think we're ready to, we're going to shift now and talk about math.
Go ahead.
Not that math is devoid of technology. Chelsea Eaton is our elementary math coordinator, as Dr. Calvin had mentioned. She's done a great job this year working with all three buildings in everything math-related, from pedagogy to some of the methodology, and then just making sure that our assessments are in line and giving teachers an opportunity to look at how kids are doing and standards and have very, she's facilitated some excellent dialogue and conversation. And some of the outcome of that work has been a cry from our teachers to have a central resource. And so that's how we kind of started looking into math expressions as well as some other math programs. Of course, we settled on math expressions. That's why we're here tonight. We're here to get your approval to move forward and purchase this resource for our teachers. Although, you'll see in a timeline in just a few slides, we began looking at math expressions late fall, early winter, we started piloting it. It does fit nicely with our strategic plan. And we've pulled out the two of the priorities and one of the strategies that we think it meshes well with. First is to align and implement a consistent curriculum. As we started to make the math modules that New York State provided our own, as we started to adapt those from their original form, we had at least the perception from some teachers, not all, that we were starting to kind of lose our center. We were starting to do some things differently, approach some things differently, and we were losing a little bit of that continuity. And we feel like using math expressions as a main resource will re-center us in that regard. In terms of supportive structures, we just dropped a couple of trees worth of materials in front of you. And really, within those materials, there's ideas and supports for teachers to enrich students' activities, to reteach and remediate students. It's a lot of resource for our teachers to make sure that we're reaching that main goal, and that's helping all kids, every kid, reach their full potential, particularly our students from a lower socioeconomic background and our students with special needs.
So like Joe talked about, that why, and, you know, being in the classroom for seven years here at Wayne and having some experience before coming to Wayne is, you know, math is a huge part of everyday life. And, you know, I taught the modules, I was a part of all of that. So I do have the experience as well as, you know, having these conversations district-wide. So, you know, and with that, we were thinking about, you know, why do we need this common resource? We were using the modules as our common resource. But in stepping into my, this year, I've really, like Joe said, in those conversations and collaboration I've been having district-wide this year, we found that we really needed, and teachers were really kind of reaching out for a primary resource that could kind of bring us all back in and create some of that consistency and autonomy that was aligned with our New York State standards. So with that being said, it became very teacher-driven. This was not something that was created from myself or Joe or even brought to the table by ourselves. It was brought to us by teachers, sitting down with them through various meetings and collaborations. So it was very teacher-pushed and teacher-driven, looking at how we could continue to align with the common core and moving towards math expressions. It was very standards-based. When we looked at every lesson, we noticed that everything was very standards-based. It wasn't looking at one lesson and trying to address five different standards within that lesson. It was very standard-specific. So the students would know exactly what standard they were trying to attain within that particular lesson. And the other part that we found to be very effective was, it was proven to be effective in raising student achievement. Part of looking at this was really doing my research at surrounding districts around us. And there is a lot of very high-performing districts very close to us that are utilizing math expressions as their core and primary resource. Looking at our process, like Joe said, this started back in October, November. It was myself sitting down with a couple AIS teachers, a couple K-5 teachers, and some building principals. And we sit down and really just had some conversations about what our needs were for the district and how we were going to continue to move our proficiency to a greater level. And looking at that is when we really kind of honed in on the math expressions. We brought in a variety of different programs. We thought back to programs that we had utilized in the past here in the district. Everyday Math was a program we used in the district in the past. So we looked at that, and we looked at a variety of other programs. And we really targeted in that this was a really viable resource that was going to help our teachers and our students and our parents to move forward. So with that being said, we decided to move into a pilot. And we did so in December. We ordered our materials, and we developed a really quick relationship with HMH and math expressions. And they provided us with the materials that we needed, and it was a very small pilot starting up. We had a few teachers from the 3-5 at Freewill starting our pilot up, and we had one teacher per grade at OE starting up with the pilot. By January, the pilot had totally emerged. We had almost every teacher at OE doing that, as well as a few more teachers at Freewill and the 3-5 levels doing it. They were really noticing what was happening with the kids, the engagement that was happening with the kids, as well as the sharing that some of the teachers were doing from the feedback from parents. Initially, as soon as it got started, we started to really get a lot of positive feedback from parents, not just about the content, but about the abilities that they were seeing in their kids. And kids weren't struggling at night on homework anymore. And they were excited about doing math because math was exciting, not just visually, but they were very engaging. The math talk was being promoted a lot within these, within this particular resource. So again, within another month, it had totally taken off again. And by then, OP had really gotten some information about that, and they totally moved into the pilot, too. So it started off very small. We weren't expecting it to kind of grow to the extent that it did so fast. But by February, a majority of our district was, K-5 was in the program. Grade 1 at Freewill had started it, and all of K-2 at OP had gotten into it. You know, this was, like I said, very teacher-driven. So we really were guiding the progress of this by teachers. So, you know, after a lot of teachers were in it, were having the interactions with the program, March came, our PD came in March. And what we really wanted to do was focus- And what we really wanted to do was focus in as to where were we with us? Where were we with this process and where were we with this pilot? And was it worth moving forward? And, you know, like we had said, we wanted it to be teacher-driven. We wanted it to come from the teachers. It wasn't something that, you know, we wanted to be handed to them and told to talk. So we devoted our March 18th to the teachers and a sharing out of the program and the process and the reactions that students were having and the progress that the students were having with the program. So we had a panel discussion of teachers and sharing out their experiences and feedback and that was how we took our next steps of moving forward to getting to this point. And a little bit more of talking about more specifically math expression. The overarching message is that it's a very comprehensive resource. It, it embeds a lot of professional development for teachers from working with myself as well as our PD that comes in from Math Expressions, as well as a lot of online professional development that is provided for teachers, as well as all of the resources that you have in front of you. It encourages supportive discussions. A lot of discussions kind of got lost in different things, so we really thought that it was very clearly evident in this program. And it allowed teachers to have some ease and comfort and have those conversations with their kids. And it really had a balanced approach, and I'll talk a little bit to that in the next slide. But it really lended itself to show what the kids knew and the progress that the teachers could find with a variety of evidence to differentiate and support all of our learners in which the strategic plan is a big focus within. So if you look, and obviously, I'm not expecting this to be read, but it's just, it just goes to show you, this is the first page in a teacher manual that the teachers would have. There's a couple floating around, but the basis that I really wanted to, to demonstrate with this is that it's showing a day in a glance. And, you know, like we've said, this is a resource. We're not expecting this to be a scripted manual that the teachers are going to utilize, but it becomes a primary resource as we move forward because it's a very tiered approach. And one of the things that was really evident to us when we opened this was, like I said, it's very standards-based. It's identifying one or two standards that the students are going to target within their instruction for that particular day. And you can see that it's, it really allows a lot of differentiation. So it really allows teachers to provide the support to a variety of their learners. I know that's one of our biggest focuses with our strategic plan right now is, is really targeting those subgroups and targeting our special ed students. And with this program, it really lends itself to really not only target our students that are needing that intervention, but targeting our on-level students with a variety of different resources, as well as differentiations for our challenging students. It has a variety of resources that provide that for a teacher. And the other component that's very strong with this program is the technology component, as Barb talked about. There's a variety of technology components that allow our teachers to isolate that intervention and that on-level and the challenge and, and really utilizing that as another resource of differentiation for our students. The next one is just a glance, again, like I said, of, of the worksheets and the papers that the students have in front of you. A lot of you obviously have seen the worksheets and what they look like for the modules and, you know, a lot of that would bring hesitation for students or stress for students. And one of the things that was very highlighted in this program was that it's student-friendly, not so overbearing for the students that it was scary. And, you know, especially in those primary ages, when they looked at things, it was scary for them, especially for students when, you know, if the teacher hadn't necessarily differentiated that particular worksheet in front of them, it was scary. So this has really allowed for students to be more engaged. And the other component that was really useful for us is it really allows for manipulation for our teachers. It allows them to get into this program and make it our own. We can differentiate according to our students. We can omit questions if need be. We can add to it if need be. It's really allowing us to make it our own individual resource. And so just to kind of highlight and summary about our program is, this is a very inclusive program that we're looking to use as a primary resource. It entails a lot for teachers. We really thought it was very essential to provide teachers with a resource that had a lot of components to reach many students' needs and many different capacities. Another aspect of this is it's, is it, is customizable. We can foster it to meet the needs of our parents and, and meet the needs of our parents in a more on-level approach and really be able to meet them through a variety of communication. The technology component that goes along with this allows students to play those variety of games at home. It allows them to get in that access, the worksheets that they've done that day. It allows them to get in and access different manuals that they can use as a resource. The homework, they can pull up at home and utilize that at home. And one of the good aspects about Things Central is it's continuing to improve with our new ageist technology and it's ongoing and it's changing and it's, it's evolving as the program continues to evolve, as well as the RTI components that's involved in this. It has a lot of that differentiation in, in targeting those kiddos that we need to target across the board. So not just our low achieving, but reaching our high achieving students too.
So our next steps pending board approval would be kind of three-tiered this summer. It's a, it's a, it's a very comprehensive program, so you can imagine. We had different teachers involved differently in expressions. So some were really exposed to it and got eyeball-deep into it, others just dipped their toe in the water. So we will provide some professional development for staff where they can earn in service and really kind of delve into the program, really understand the resources, understand the opportunity and, and it provides, I mean, their planning and preparation of math lessons. That would be late June, we would do that. You heard us talk about this as a resource, and I think that's an important distinction to make. It is not a curriculum, although it clearly very well supports the curriculum. We would do, the second tier is we would do some curriculum mapping. We're going to do a crosswalks with the standard. We're going to make sure the standards are addressed in the way that we, that we're comfortable with it. We're going to look for any gaps. We're going to give teachers an opportunity to supplement lessons and supplant some lessons based on their experience in teaching math and an opportunity to make the curriculum our own, as well as look at the scope and sequence of the work. And then the third part is, is the assessment review. We want to make sure that our common assessments that Chelsea started and created with feedback and, and support and collaboration with the teachers continues. So there's, there are assessments at the end of each unit and there are also interim assessments within the program. So we will go into those assessments. We'll make sure that, that the rigor is there, that the formatting is, is where we want to see it and that we're getting the information that we need from our, from the time our kids take in, in taking these assessments. And then we will roll September with it. You heard Chelsea talk about the staff development day late in March or mid-March. These are some of the comments from our teachers. Certainly not all of the comments from all of the teachers were positive. There were some concerns about the rigor and we'll address that with our curriculum mapping and with our assessments, making sure that we, that we actually grow from what we learned this year in the pilot. But by and large, it was, it was extremely positive. Love it. Engaging for students. Love the resource. It feels supported. So we would like to go forward with it. With that though, we'll take any questions you may have.
I know with everyday math, in the past, one of the big complaints was it didn't give enough skill drill with math facts. Does this one provide it? And have they improved and put more in? Because I was terribly lacking, I know, with everyday math.
Right.
That is, sorry. That is one component that is strong within the program. And one of the components teachers were, you know, asking about or inquiring about is, you know, how is it embedded? And my daughter was in a classroom this year that was part of the pilot and her factory call developed so fast. It has it embedded within the lessons as well as fluency checks throughout the program that allows teachers to individualize it to their needs, as well as through the games that are both intervention on-level and challenge for the kids. So it, it has a variety of different ways that it allows to be targeted, as well as through the variety of assessments that they have within the program. And it also targets it through the RTI component, which is part of those tiers of that differentiation. So that was, like I said, one of those pieces that we really liked about the program is it hit each one of those components in a variety of ways, so it wasn't just one size fits all for the kids.
Then you can really target all the populations. And I noticed in one of the lessons, it talked about the spiral.
Yep.
Trust the spiral, the old mantra.
They do. Every single night of the kiddo's homework is, on the front of the homework, they have the primary targets for the lesson for that day. And on the back of the homework is a spiral review of concepts that they've been taught throughout the year.
That's huge.
So if I'm getting this right, this is like just an additive to the curriculum to help them teach the curriculum?
It will be a central, it will be a central resource for the curriculum. It will be our primary.
Don't really go through this whole thing. They take pieces out of it and use it to whatever they feel.
We anticipate using, using the majority of the program, but infusing and supplementing some lessons from, from, from our experiences in teaching math. We do expect math expressions to be the primary and central resource, and so we will use the majority of the program. We want to make sure, there's been a few places where Chelsea and her team have seen in third grade, a couple of the strategy, or a couple of the standards not quite addressed the way we need them addressed. There's, there's a few post-test things that we want to make sure are included. But we do see that expressions pieces is quite the anchor for, for the work we do.
And there's a lot in front of you. And, and that was one of math expressions' big, big positive pieces is that they provide way more than you would possibly need. And by no means is every single piece of this expected to be utilized in a lesson, but they wanted to be able to provide a variety of resources to target all areas of subgroups for our classrooms.
Chelsea, you have the differentiated book, the cards here. And I have the fifth-grade book here. So I would like you to show me how that works with this book.
What book do you have? The homework book?
Yeah. Like to either make it easier or harder. I want to try and spot. I want to see how those cards help you with the lesson that, you know, if they're working on this one lesson, how the teacher would either differentiate it up or differentiate it down.
So within the lesson, math expressions allows teachers to utilize the program in either a whole group lesson format or a center-based format. So when teachers can use their primary lesson, they would utilize the primary instruction within one of the lesson manuals. And then for centers-based activities, that's where the differentiation could come in within small groups. So for example, you could have an on-level group, you could have an intervention group that needs some reinforcement and reteaching. And that's where, for example, these particular, what, these particular cards would come in. So it would be in like a small group atmosphere and the teachers would be able to go through and, and this particular concept would work at a level and a language that would reach the target students that need some further reteaching. Then there's another card that would allow teachers to differentiate it to students that just need continued practice but are understanding the skills. And then it also allows for that differentiation to really enrich some of our students. And with that being said, there's also more challenge activities or more reinforcement activities through the challenge center or the worksheets.
I see, it says stretch your thinking.
Yep. So it really allows for providing a variety of ways to meet your students' needs. Another component that kind of reaches that area is the RTI components, the Tier 1 and the Tier 2. That first Tier 1 is really reaching the students at another reinforcement level and allowing them to understand a particular standard in isolation. So it works within that and then it breaks it down even further. So it really allows to reach your students either one-on-one or in small group or in that whole group atmosphere. So it really allows you to teach one particular standard at a level and language that the students will understand.
So do we buy consumables like this for, and we make copies, or the kids get the book, or how is it done?
A lot of the program, one of the big programs, like I talked about, is the online component. So everything that you have in front of you, except for the student consumables, which say student workbook on it, which I believe is the one that you have, there's the hard copy version.
Already on. First grade now, also.
The, the consumables are the only thing that we would essentially have to purchase. Everything else that you have in front of you is online. However, in part of our purchase, we would actually have all of these materials gratis in as part of our purchase. So we would essentially not, we would be buying the materials that the students would have in front of them, which essentially is the consumable and...
And I'm assuming they are start, part of the state aid textbook formula? Okay.
And that online part?
The allows teachers...
Will work right in with the iPads that we're providing to the kids?
Yep.
See how I put that together?
I'll make sure, I want to make sure of it. As you talked about the pilot developing, it sounded like more and more people were joining. Do we have a group that used the pilot that we can compare with those who did not, provide student test data that shows that it's working? Or is it, or did too many people join the, the process to do that?
I will tell you, I did not anticipate the snowball effect and probably didn't do the best job of managing the pilot itself. Just, so it would be very difficult to say, to assign a causation.
Okay.
You know, we can correlate maybe a little bit, but to say that...
Maybe a previous year, look at?
We certainly...
Casual relationship, at least.
It's a great program.
And the company has been, first of all, I just want, is fantastic to work with. They've, they've done some workshops with the teachers. We've done some release times. They work closely with Chelsea. We talked about our PD, we want to do this, this summer, and they work closely with me on that, so...
So is all that support part of the package?
Yep. And you could obviously always buy more support if you chose to, but we feel pretty good about where we are.
You had mentioned that there were other districts around us, some high-performing ones, without asking who they were. Can you, do you have a, a rough estimate of how many districts in our, in our, in our area are actually using this program now? Is it five, twenty, a lot?
I did get a list that Math Expressions actually provided to us. It is some very close neighboring districts, very close bordering districts to us that are utilizing it.
Is it a number of districts even, like up into the, is it, is it...
Yeah.
One I know of very well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
There are other districts around us and our boss is also looking at this program. Not as far along as we are.
You use a couple names, Webster uses it, Webster Underground uses, there's a variety of people.
Yes. Destin Pittsburgh.
How popular is it, how many?
But we did do, I mean, we've adopted other, you know, curriculum in the past. We've done much more due diligence with this, and I actually had to remind the teachers of that who said maybe we need more time, the couple of stragglers. We've never had half a year of, of using it and collaborating with the company and before purchasing it, so...
But if the light bulb lights, you leave it on?
So I'm assuming that we budgeted for this in our current budget, as you started back in September.
We have, we actually have money existing in our current budget that we've kind of set aside for this. And this, by the way, is, we have textbook money that we set aside. And it is textbook-aable as well. The price, we're looking for, for your price is roughly, I would say sixty-two, sixty-four, seventy-two thousand for three years. And I will tell you that I've been a part of many textbook purchases and that's not bad. I'm sure Dr. Calvin could, could affirm.
And that's grades?
K through five.
How much Joe, seventy-two?
Seventy-two, yes.
But aable, but the state through the textbook formula.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and we're excited because we'd love to get them, you know, with your approval tonight. We will get the order moving. We'll use as much of this year's textbook money as we can and they will work with us to portion the other, the rest out. It won't be, it won't be bad. It won't be bad.
It, it is on our agenda to tie it as an information item, so I assume it'll be on the next agenda as an action item.
Yes.
And then board, yes, as, as Joe was saying, so program for K through 5,6 of our size, we could pay two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollars easily for the materials like this. So we're getting all of our kids K through 5 with math piece. Also, because there's a standard, some changes happening at the state level around some of the standards. The commissioner has told us that, she doesn't know if there'll be a lot of changes, but there'll be some K through 5. So as those things come out, the program is agreed to work, and that's provide those changes as well, so we don't have to go back and recoup and try to repay for it. But we've got it all included in the upgrades. Ted, did you have a question or was Karen, sorry?
Might I have a comment? Just, we're working on these worksheets every night with my own children. What a difference it has made and just seeing the confidence and having Chelsea as one of my children's teachers, the amount of detail that she puts into teaching the children. I have such high confidence in what she will do in developing this program to make it accessible for our teaching staff and for our students, without a doubt. It is phenomenal. So, thank you.
She has done an excellent job.
I think I need to go back to see the answer.
Thank you.
I can get the answer, but I can't show the hand.
We can pick that up now.
That's been so hard. I don't want to show my hand. Show the answer.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Never be a bad question.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you. Do you have it for you?
Okay, Board. Just a couple of things, just want to go over here first, share a little bit of an update in terms of our study. I have spoken with Dr. Timms yesterday, and he would like to come back and share his outcomes in terms of findings and recommendations for the Board for his portion of the study, which is the fiscal portion. So he'd like to do a workshop with the Board and just kind of go over everything. What we'd like to do is, if possible, it looks like most of you are thinking the seventh of, of June would be good, so if that's okay with the Board, we'd move seventh of June, six o'clock to around eight-thirty at night, and Dr. Timms will have a full PowerPoint that describes where we're at in terms of our fiscal standing, what do we need to do in the future, and how we might be better efficient. So if the Board is good with that, if everybody's good, we go for the seven, six o'clock, everybody good?
Anthony, just remind me again, Timms was in charge of?
The fiscal portion of the study. He's, he's the gentleman from the State Financial Consortium, former DS as well.
Just money?
Just the money. He's doing the money portion, okay? All right. Dr. Saversky is also looking to come back to see us, he'll be back a couple times in June, so he'd like to come and share with the Board, probably at the first meeting in June, and he'd like to share some of the information from, from his study, and then towards the end of June, he'll be back again. He's wrapping things up. So we first had the space capacity portion of the study, and you all saw the, the space, and, and now we have the enrollment projection and demographic study portion here. He has given me this piece, so I'm going to kind of present it tonight, saving us a little bit on him coming to, to share, but he'll be back. So if you have more questions, certainly you, he can come back. And when he comes back, by the way, he'll be talking more about the program portion of the study, how program delivery piece that we had the workshop on, if you remember that piece. And also, towards the end of June, he'll be talking about some of the four options, basically, so he'll give his final report to us. So I'm going to go through this and take you through a couple pages, a lot to read. And Board, please know that we'll be putting this on our website, as we agreed to be very transparent with the community. We'll be sharing this out with our district staff. I'll be sending a letter to them as well in the next week to make sure that everybody understands the different portions and the little key sections of the study, so, okay? So going to take us through tonight, and, uh, as I move through, if you have questions, certainly please, to stop me, and we can kind of do that. On page one, we'll start there tonight. Page one of the study really deals with variables that influence, let's see if I forget that, that influence future school district enrollments. And so we've done a lot this year around our census, and this study really looked deeply at the census piece for us. And some of the things that we know influence future school enrollments are live births in the area, you heard Dr. Saversky talk a lot about the live birth population, new households, populations with children that move into the district can affect our enrollment, new populations who move to the district who are at childbearing age, who may not have kids yet but be in that age frame where they might want to have kids, begin a family, enrollments of students from non-public schools or from homeschooling settings, school programs and academic intervention changes that may increase the success of the school district. When you get new programs into schools, sometimes it does influence future enrollment. And then a change by other public schools, so if any, who tuition students to attend the, the school district. So sometimes districts may not be able to offer everything that they like to, so they might tuition kids in. We have this year seventeen kids who have been tuitioned in from other districts. So those are all things that might influence enrollment within the district. And the study really kind of deals with, with those, looks at all of those things. On page two of the study, one of the things that you, that we do want to make sure that we talk about is that the study does have some limitations to it. What you'll find is there are about ten years' worth of projections here based on the data that we have, but after five years, you have to be careful, because things could change in five years. You could have more businesses move in, more housing, things happen, there's no crystal ball. So in the study, Dr. Saversky does, and, and his team gives ten-year projections out, but they do want to make sure that everybody understands that really, the first five years is really what you kind of really want to make sure you pay close attention to, and just keep in mind that things could change, right? Depending on what happens five years out, basically. Going now to, uh, in terms of methodology, just want, you know, so we're going to look at student enrollments, annual kindergarten class enrollments, and then live birth numbers as we begin to think about future enrollment here. So on page three of the study, there's some information here, there's a chart here that deals with historical perspectives for Wayne. And here we're looking at the history over the last five years at Wayne. What we learned from the study is that our enrollment unfortunately has gone down, which isn't a surprise, we know that. In two thousand and ten, we had twenty-four hundred twenty-five students, right? And then slowly we began to see a, a decline in our population. So currently, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we have twenty-two thirty-six. We actually have a couple less than that because of our migrating population, so you have some kids who move in, then move out, and we still have some kids who might be moving out unfortunately before the school year's out. We hope kids would stay, but sometimes families do migrate in that way. So what we've seen is that there is historical decline in terms of enrollment, okay? On page number four, at the top, Dr. Saversky and team really wanted us to see, on chart two, here, which is here, the historical pattern of K-six and seven-twelve enrollment since two thousand and ten. What we've noted here is that there has been some declining enrollment. So in K-six enrollment, we had a total of twelve hundred and twelve kids in two thousand and ten, and currently we're at eleven forty-two, right? And we have seen that, that pattern come true, because we've seen each year smaller kindergarten class sizes, right? We know for next year, for example, we, we, we don't have enough kids to fill some of our kindergarten placements that we have now. So we've seen that enrollment happening right now. In seven through twelve enrollment, we started in two thousand and ten at twelve hundred and thirteen, and we're currently down to one thousand eighty-eight. In chart three, this chart illustrates the historical patterns of K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve. K through five enrollment was at originally a thousand twenty-nine kids, and now is down to nine hundred and sixty-nine. Nine through twelve enrollment, back in two thousand and ten, eight hundred and twenty-one kids, and now down to seven hundred and twenty-seven. Six through eight enrollment at five hundred and seventy-five, and now down to five hundred and thirty-four. And by the way, these numbers are taken from the beds data report, that usually happens October fifteenth, around that time, and so we, we, that's where, you know, we're getting these numbers from in terms of our enrollment records, okay? Over to page number seven in the study. So enrollment is not really just a Wayne issue, right? It's really a county issue, not just the county, but other districts around us are also experiencing this. So in Wayne County in Ontario, now we're just looking at live births here. In two thousand and two, the study found that there was a hundred and seventeen live births in Ontario, right? And now down to two thousand and thirteen, we have eighty-nine live births, okay? Total of twelve hundred over the last ten or eleven years there. In Walworth, a hundred and thirty-five births in two thousand and two, and now we're at a hundred and one. So about thirty-four less births happening here, basically. Massenden saw about eleven less births, according to the data here, eleven, a hundred and eleven down to, you know, a hundred. In two thousand and three in Massenden, they were up to a hundred and twenty-three, and now down to around a hundred. Williamson at seventy-four, at a peak time for them in two thousand and four, they were at eighty-three, and now down to, look at that number, sixty-eight, right? And even in Moreau County, Webster is, which is close to us, they had four hundred and eighteen in two thousand and two, right? And that number peaked around two thousand and seven to four hundred and forty-eight, now down to three hundred and eighty-six. And Penfield at three hundred and fifty-seven in two thousand and two peaked again in, in two thousand and six to three hundred and fifty-nine, and now down to three hundred and twenty-nine. So in terms of live births and people having kids, we know people are just not having as many as they had ten years ago, right? So it's not just a Wayne issue that's seeing enrollment drops, it's really the, the, the whole county is, is seeing this. And as I talk to my colleagues who are superintendents, they, they all are talking about enrollment. Many of them are talking about, you know, where are the people? Where are the kids? And we'll get into what's been happening that's, that's caused some of these changes, okay? On page eight, you will see some live birth data from Wayne County since two thousand and four. Here's some more information around live births from the whole county. So in Wayne County in two thousand and four, we had one thousand one hundred and eighteen live births, and now in two thousand and thirteen, down to nine hundred and sixty. So again, the whole county has seen changes there. Go ahead.
I'd be interested to know what the average age of the population was in two thousand and four to thirteen. Do we have any of that data? Just because I think that, you know...
In two thousand and fourteen?
Right, well, it's got from two thousand and four to two thousand and thirteen. To see what the average age was at that time, and also, um, population.
Right.
Is that, is the population itself decreased, you know, people moving out of state, people moving out of the area?
So as we move through, there's some information around demographics that will hopefully answer some of those questions, we'll get through, through that, get to that for sure. In terms of enrollment, figure two, again, on page nine now, some live births in Wayne school districts, so our live birth count has, we know in our district has gone down. So in two thousand and six, which was really at our peak, we had about a hundred and sixty-four kids being born, right? And then now in two thousand and fourteen, a hundred and thirty-eight kids. And again, we're experiencing that, we see that with the lower enrollment for, at the kindergarten level, we're seeing and sensing that already, okay, and realizing that. So no surprises there for us. And on page twelve, we'll skip ahead to page twelve, here we see kindergarten enrollment from two thousand and six to two thousand and fifteen. And so in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we had a hundred and thirty-six, excuse me, let me go back, kindergarten enrollment two thousand fifteen, sixteen, of, we had a hundred and thirty-six is seventeen less than kindergarten enrollment in two thousand and six, and it is a decrease in kindergarten enrollment as well between two thousand and six and with two thousand and fifteen. Here, here what you see with our enrollment, two thousand and seven, we had a hundred and sixty-five kids. At our peak, two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and eighty kids, right? Lot of kindergartners here. And then, so now we've, we're about fifty kids less, or just, just under fifty kids less, down to one hundred and thirty-six. And this is kindergarten enrollment, and again, we, we see that happening, we, we've experienced it here at Wayne. Are we, okay, Board?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, keep, keep moving?
Some winters are colder than others.
I think it's economic driven, if you go back, it dropped, you just have to, it's a lot more difficult to see in two thousand and nine.
In two thousand...
Yeah.
Okay. On, uh, page thirteen, figure five, Wayne, again, kindergarten, we see same, same kind of scenario, right? So kindergarten enrollments, we had a hundred and eighty who enrolled, two thousand and fifteen, a hundred and thirty-six enrolled. Over down to page number sixteen, this is really again, looking at ratios of kindergarten enrollments, and kind of just showed you a graph, this graph shows you again in a different way, the historical live birth ratios here from Wayne. And you can see, you know, two thousand and seven, we were kind of down, then we peaked up again around two thousand and ten, really went up in two thousand and twelve, right? And then numbers started coming down, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, to where we're at right now, according to the study. Now, in terms of projecting in the future, when you look at live births that are happening at this time, what we, what Dr. Saversky's study found is that, so around two thousand and eleven, again, there's the historical piece on that portion of the graph, you can see the historical piece where we were, we were at a peak around two thousand and twelve, numbers started coming down. And so out in the next five years, here's what we, we see. The projected numbers will, around two thousand and sixteen, we'll have maybe one or two kids more, right? But then we start to go down, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, kind of the same. Two thousand and nineteen, we'll have a little bit of a, a hike in some of our kindergarten numbers, ten or twelve, but then we'll go back down again. That's kind of what we see with live birth information right now, okay?
If you, if I read through this somewhere, will it say why they project nineteen, is it increased?
Sure.
Because of the live births five years earlier.
There you go, right.
Right.
There you go.
I'm just looking at this at the births in the municipalities, like if you look at kindergarten enrollment, like that high year that we have, two thousand and twelve, is that the birth or is that...
It's the live birth.
No, for kindergarten enrollment in two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and eighty. But so if that was two thousand and twelve, then you look back to like two thousand and seven at the birth, and we actually had, like, less births in some of our, our catchment areas than, than others, I don't know.
You must have had a lot of movements then.
Sometimes you do.
Developments.
Developments, kids moving in, kids moving out, that can affect, sometimes the numbers, yes.
So it's, it's just not all...
That's when, uh, that's when Southbrook and it's also when River Homes was building, back during that time period.
You mean over here, in that river?
Mm-hmm.
So, just, um, kind of want to keep moving. Let me, um, take you now to this page, and this is probably one of the most important pages that we do need to kind of think through a little bit here.
Which one's that?
On page twenty, this is enrollment projection, so we look at now the entire K through twelve enrollment projections, right? And we look at it five years out, ten years out, right? So looking not only at live birth data, but also the kids who are in our system now, the amount of kids that we typically get on average over the last five years, right? We looked at our tuition kids, kids who get tuition, and what's our averages, our private school, our public school kids, and then put all that data together. With all of that data, Dr. Saversky and his team did the, you know, the most strongest projections that they could see, right? And this, what we show historically, you can see the graph, right, where it was at the peak, and you can see the enrollment numbers, unfortunately, they are coming down. So where we're at now, right? We went from twenty-four, twenty-five, down now to twenty-two, thirty, just under, as I shared, because, today, because of the migrating population, right? And then in terms of projected future, right? What Dr. Saversky's team did was they gave to us a baseline, a low range for projections, a mid-range, and a high range. So at, at the most in two thousand and sixteen, right, we'd have, according to our, our closest projections, around twenty-one ninety-two, twenty-one hundred kids, ninety, twenty-one ninety-two. Mid-range, again, about twenty-one ninety-two, and at the, on the low end, twenty-one eighty-eight. So between two thousand one hundred eighty-eight kids and two thousand one hundred ninety-two. And again, so we're looking at all the grade levels, the kids who are graduating, the kids who are coming in, the live birth information that we know, and these are some of the projections, right? And so that number, according to this, if we look just five years out to twenty twenty, right, or twenty twenty-one...
Almost two hundred kids.
Right, exactly, right? Our numbers will, what we know is that they, they will go down, right, according to our information. So very, you know, really interesting slide in terms of projections, and, and thought-provoking to think about, you know, the future of Wayne, how we want to respond to that, basically. We certainly don't have to respond to that, but just something that, you know, we want to keep our eye on, is we're thinking about efficiencies and how we, you know, respond in the future. So unfortunately, Wayne is not at a, at a point right now in the next five years where we're growing. Unfortunately, our numbers are going down, so we want to make sure that we are keeping that in mind as we move forward, basically, in decision-making, okay?
Anthony, when you look at that, like the twenty twenty versus the twenty sixteen, that's the five-year, okay, and there's twenty-one eighty-eight if you took the long range and you compare it with the five-year, you know, tw- two thousand and two. Then do you kind of like divide, like it's a hundred and eighty kids left, do you kind of divide that over thirteen grade levels, or is that kind of how you figure?
No, you really wouldn't divide over great, thirteen grade levels, you just kind of look at the grade levels and see who's going to go up, who's graduating, who's going up from grade level to grade level, and you kind of just try to get it from each of the grade levels that way. So you really don't divide it, you just, you look internally at the system, how many are in at that grade level, how many would move up each year, and how many are coming in at the beginning of the system, using the live birth.
The live birth.
Yeah. Okay? So it, you know, it is certainly, um, you know, a slant to see.
I know.
Okay? Moving forward.
Yeah. I'm high school, I'm high school.
On page twenty-one, here we look at district enrollment and homeschool, non-public enrollment. So sometimes when you think about your enrollment, you, you ask yourself, well, is this because of, you know, other entities? Like, is it because of kids who are going to homeschool, be homeschooled, or is it because of kids who are going to public, you know, non-public schools? Want to know, is that taking some of our enrollment away, right? Really, really what we found is, is, is really not affecting things at all. Um, our, our homeschool piece has pretty much stayed the same, right? It, it really has stayed consistent. In fact, it used to be, we had more kids in homeschool, we had more kids in non-public schools, but we have less now. And that numbers is really evened out. And we believe over the next couple of years, that number will pretty much stay the same as well. We have about ninety kids who go to non-public schools, um, and, um, uh, excuse me, a hundred and ninety kids, I apologize. And then we have about ninety kids who are in homeschool settings, basically, okay? And those numbers pretty much have stayed consistent. So that really hasn't affected us a lot in terms of an up or down kind of piece with enrollment, okay? We also wanted to look at our tuition students, page twenty-three. So we have some kids who are enrolled and paid tuition. We have some less, but not a huge amount, right? So in two thousand and ten, we had twenty-three kids who were tuitioned in. And we're currently at two thousand, in two thousand and fifteen, seventeen kids, basically. So not too many kids, not, not too much difference. We okay?
And those are mostly special kids that come from another district.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Is that a flat rate fee?
We, we do, uh, charge, we look at their program, what their needs are, and then it's all tabulated. Um, you know, so some kids may need more specialized services like OTPT speech, and we charge based on what those needs are, basically, okay? We look at what the total cost of their program is and provide that.
I see some of the students training. I strained to see that, there's a board right behind you, if you want to look at that as well.
Also want you to know on page twenty-seven, uh, there was, uh, Dr. Saversky and his team not only talked with, with our staff, they only looked at our data, our state data, our census data, but also met with several realtors, uh, town officials to, to gain information and gain insight. And we learned some things about the hous- the housing market, um, from two of our, our housing market folks. Frank Robusto, current realtor, also Kristen, can't pronounce last name.
Gubalay.
Thank you, thank you, uh, from Remax Realty, were, were interviewed to gain some insight about the housing market within the school district. Both of the realtors referred to really the very positive assets of Wayne Central and shared, you know, the history of Wayne. Mr. Robusto explained in his portion of the interview that those who bought homes in two thousand and five to two thousand and ten, that bubble might, um, unfortunately, at this time, what we know in terms of real estate is that many of them are, they might just be breaking even actually with their homes. So if you buy a home, if you bought a home back in two thousand and five, when you go to sell it now, you might basically just be breaking even on it. Um, many people actually have experienced loss, uh, when they go to sell some of their homes, unfortunately, at this time in the area. Um, and given the, the affordability of existing properties, the new housing construction market, um, is less and is therefore, there is a little, there, there is little not speculative construction. We don't have as much construction happening now, we know, in our district, in our area, as we've probably had in the past. Both of the realtors also, interestingly enough, did point to the importance of the Ghanai Nuclear Power Plant and its impact on property tax rates. You know, if it closes, there's some concern out there amongst people around Ghanai. Uh, and both mentioned that the lack of condos, townhouses and rental properties, um, also have kind of, you know, um, contributed to some of this as well in terms of our enrollments. Uh, Mr. Robusto suggests that Wayne is kind of like where Webster was thirty years ago. Um, and it's, it's in a timeframe where, you know, who knows what will happen in the future? With, with the right mix of, you know, business and families, Wayne could, could really turn the picture around, basically, but. So those are some of the things we've heard.
I grew up in Webster in that time, watched the schools close and then watched what happened, right?
Yeah, that's the thing they didn't sell.
Well, they did sell a lot of them.
Couple people from there.
Yeah, but they sold a bunch of them too.
Well, people just aren't having as many children today. That, that's a lot of them. They need a lot less homes from twenty years ago. People had five, six, seven kids. Today, some people want to have any.
And so in some of our towns, you know, so in Ontario, here's just some, some of the outlet, this is an outlook for the next five years. Here's what we see happening now in some of our towns. So in Ontario, there currently are seven permits for new single-family home construction. Uh, there were ten to eleven last year. So there's really no major development around homes. Walworth, um, an average of about ten to fourteen single-family homes a year are built. Uh, one active tract, which is called Orchard View, uh, twelve to fourteen lots across from the Quickfill. Now on the planning stage and about four months, uh, out for the approval process. And there is another section in the same subdivision with about thirty lots for three-plus bedroom, single-family residentials with a long-range planning perspective, basically. Massenden, there really is no ac- no action happening around Massenden, no major developments. Williamson, no major developments. Webster, no major developments. Um, no, no additional action in Penfield, two acre lot zoning districts. Um, I want to change that a little bit though, what we've learned recently since gathering some of this. So we know Penfield, it does have actually some, some, um, developing hap- things happening. Two hundred and fifty homes recently approved, recently to, to be built, right? Yeah, and then another, another area where the golf course is, people are still fighting over, can we build homes on the old golf course? So many, many of the people, what we see in, in our area, where people moving to, right? We know there's a plan, in Penfield at least, for around two hundred and fifty new-built homes. Younger families, right, want the new stainless steel refrigerator and stove, right? They want to be able to have the latest greatest, right, uh, for under two hundred and fifty thousand, two seventy at the most. Um, and we just don't see that kind of a number right now happening in our area. So that's, that's led to some of this unfortunate, um, enrollment decline in the area. And not just here, but really in the whole county, right, in many of these areas, as we see.
What do they consider major development?
Two hundred and fifty homes. All at once starting to be built.
So fifty homes would not be considered major development?
To make a big impact fiscally on the district and also in terms of kids, you want to be able to have, yeah, much more than that, wherever possible, right? Um, the other thing that's led to some, some of this in terms of demographics, so really, uh, twenty, if you look at this chart here on page twenty-nine, what you'll see is that thirty percent of our population currently at Wayne is between the age of twenty and forty-four. Thirty percent, nearly thirty percent. And that is the prime childbearing age. Before that, we certainly don't want them having kids, right? And, uh, unless, we don't. Uh, and then after that, right, forty-five to eighty, you got fifty percent of the population who live in Wayne are past the childbearing age, right? There you go. So, I mean, in fact, some of the homes that they, they've just kind of started to build up over here, I was talking to John Smith the other day. You know, some of these are like patio homes, homes for, you know, with little apartments, you know, for people who are in their retirement age, not really childbearing age. So that's why we see the projected slope.
In, in the last five years, the median age of our school district has gone up by four years.
And, you know, some of that too, that you're probably, that you contributed to is the housing market. You know, these people, a lot of these people in that age group that are no longer having the children, bought the housing at peak times. Now that's dropped, they can't get out from underneath it because they, hey, so their, so their decision is, I'm staying. I'm not selling to another, to a younger family that would normally be moving in at the time.
We don't think you may like, like, other areas a lot of people.
So we, so we have a couple of things, right? So we have, again, the median, the, the age difference, right? Many of our people moving in are not at childbearing age piece there. And then we have people who, when they go to sell their homes, right, some of them are not being able to be, be sold. They may break even or not quite get as, as what you'd like to get out of it, right? And all those things I think have contributed, right? Whether negatively or positively, right, to, to where we're at right now, okay? So Dr. Saversky, towards the end of his, this study, page thirty-two, this portion of the study, he asked several questions and he states some information. So on page thirty-two, he talks about, first of all, about twenty-seven percent of the, the school district's population is at childbearing age. And in two thousand and ten, about thirty percent of the population was at the childbearing age. So what are some of the possible impacts? You know, and, and what changes in the house market might influence childbearing ages? And then also, um, you know, about seventy-one percent of all household units in Wayne have at least three bedrooms. What are the possible impacts on the school district if existing family-sized homes and or rental units turn over at a slower rate? Just some questions to kind of think about. He also talks about the estimated median age of the district is forty-five point three years, which is outside of, again, the child, um, chair, uh, childbearing age.
Which is, which shows why we're declining.
Yes. And then in two thousand and fifteen, the share of total household in Wayne Central was one person, uh, one, excuse me, one or more persons with sixty-five years or older, um, which is about one out of four house, one, one out of four households in Wayne, um, now has a person in it that's sixty-five years old. When it, when it used to be one out of five in two thousand and ten. So that, you know, one out of four, twenty-five percent of our, right?
Where does this data come from?
Since this data, yes.
From the country?
From the town, from, from the, the state, all, all that data is pulled together from, from, basically, yep. Counties, town, all of it, pulling it all together. And then, again, so he asked, you know, are there noticeable dichotomies of opinion about the school district by thirty out of a hundred households, right? So this, this, knowing this is really important because as we move forward, even with our budgeting process, we want to keep in mind, who's, who's paying the bill, right? And so that we're careful and efficient around, uh, what we do with regard to how we spend, basically, as a district. And then lastly, the median household income is about sixteen percent lower than the median family income in Wayne. The average household, he says, uh, income is about fourteen percent lower than the average family income in Wayne Central School District. The average non-family income is about forty-seven percent lower than the average family income. So he asked a question at the end, he says, has this disparity between the average family and non-family incomes caused a noticeable difference in expectations for education by segments of the community? Kind of, so we have a goal around reaching all kids, right? Kids who are in poverty, kids who are, who, um, have disabilities, right? So he's, he's not saying that there is an issue, but is there, is there an issue in, in the community around that? Given what we know different now about our community, so just, just things to think about. So he's, he's asking, you know, given the demographic change, has there been any, has there been any differences in terms of perceptions about some of the children or people who live within our community? Are we, just thought provoking question to think about.
Some households or families and some are simply households, and there's a difference in economics between the two, Carla.
So I'm going to just kind of go back here for a minute, try and catch up here. Just go back here, let's take a picture. So in terms of K through five enrollments, here's just a picture for you, sorry about that. Page number thirty-three. So here we are in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and again, he did a high range, low range and a mid-range for us to look at, right? So at the low range, we'd have about nine hundred and forty-three students. At the higher mid-range, nine hundred and forty-seven in two thousand and sixteen school year, right? And we, and again, we see that, we already see that now.
Does that seem accurate with what you're going?
Very accurate, we see it already in enrollment, okay? Um, and then two thousand and seventeen, you can see how those numbers, the enrollment declined, right there, okay? Then looking on page thirty, uh, four, six through eight estimated enrollment. So you see where we're at right now, above the five hundred and twenty-five mark, five thirty-four. And then you will see down to twenty twenty-three, we're projected at on a low range, four hundred and eighteen, high range, four hundred and twenty-six, between grade six and eight. In grade nine through twelve, so this year, we're kind of, we're at seven twenty-seven. Next year, we have a little bump because of who's coming up from middle school, right, up to seven thirty-three. But then, as you graduate the class next year, your numbers will go down to seven seventeen. Yes, and then, um, we'll stay kind of consistent the next year, right, and then start to go down again to seven oh five in two thousand and nineteen, according to these projections. So the whole K through twelve estimated enrollment, so a couple of things to think about. Page thirty-six here. Just some things we want to think on, according to what our data shows us, right? K through five enrollment, enrollment may decrease, right, uh, by about a hundred and thirty-five pupils over the next five years. So that, that's big to think about. K through five enrollment may decrease by a hundred and thirty-five kids over the next five years. Six through eight total enrollment may decrease by a hundred and eight pupils over the next eight years. And nine through twelve by a hundred and seven over the next ten years, right? So we want to think about that because that's, that's nearly four, over, that's over three hundred kids, right? So as we begin to move forward, as we plan, as we think about efficiencies, our, our buildings, our space, you know, everything that we do, we want to be keeping that in mind, basically, to inform decision-making there, okay? Any questions, board, by the way? I know I'm going over a lot of stuff.
There's a lot of data.
Yes. Page thirty-seven, I'm almost done here, just three more things. So this now goes back, so you heard Dr. Saversky share before about the pupil capacity, the space capacity. Remember, we talked about the space? So now he's brought that in with the numbers in terms of our, our, our kids. So let's just look at the elementary level, so at, um, let me make sure I have the right one here, here we go. So K through five, we currently with all of our K through five buildings, we have a capacity to house one thousand three hundred and sixty-six children, right? That's our capacity. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we know, based on these numbers, that we will have between eight, in a low range, eight hundred and sixty-six to eight hundred and seventy-eight kids. So again, we know we can house thirteen hundred, but we would have between eight hundred and sixty-six to eight hundred and seventy-eight for K through five, uh, kids. That's nearly forty percent of our capacity not utilized, uh, K through five, okay, space. Which, again, is okay if that's a priority for us as a district, right? But that's something we need to think about. How do we want to use and think about space? The second is middle school, or grade six rather, K through six now, let's look at K through six settings. We have enough space for fifteen hundred sixty-six K through six students. And we know by two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we'll have around one thousand, between one thousand forty-seven and one thousand fifty-nine, which is, again, about five hundred, space for five hundred, um, more, uh, kids. Again. Yeah, yes. Seven through eight, uh, total grade, um, six through eight, uh, excuse me, uh, yeah, six through eight, we would have space for eight hundred and sixty-six kids. And we know, um, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, our enrollment is projected at five hundred and seventeen. And we're already just, um, above, um, five hundred. Got some kids probably have to go for studying tonight.
Did they need their stuff signed?
Uh, Amy signed it.
Okay, okay. And at the high school level, nine through twelve. So we have a capacity now at the high school to, to take care of eleven hundred and thirty-six kids. Um, and by two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, seven hundred and seventeen kids. Um, our total capacity right now across the district, K through twelve, we have the capacity to fit three hundred, excuse me, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight kids. And we know that we will around two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, have between twenty-one hundred and twenty-one, uh, twelve. So again, nearly forty percent of our capacity across all of our facilities unutilized, according to this study. Something for us to think about, really, as we move forward.
Yeah, because when he did this, I mean, he was looking at classrooms, he wasn't like, how many, was he counting like every napkin, tray, or spaces? They're currently used now.
Space that not only is used now, but space period that we can educate kids in, right? So everything that is a part of that edu- cafeteria is included in that as well. Classrooms, you know, our gyms, music room, every space that you use to educate kids, we have the space to educate that many kids, yes. He looked at all of those things, right? So we're not talking about offices, right? Unless they're offices that could be instructional spaces, right? It's the instructional spaces that we're looking at, places where you can teach and house, have kids in, basically.
There's a state formula, Carla, that says, X number of feet. Per kid, type of thing.
Right. Um, so again.
I mean, I don't doubt that he knew what to do, it's just very surprising.
So the last two slides, again, uh, page thirty-eight, again, looking out five years, on page thirty-eight is what you'll see. So five years out, again, total thirty-three sixty-eight we could, we could, how, we could have here. By two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, two thousand and two kids, two thousand and twenty-four kids. And, and here again, he did that low to mid, high range, basically, for us. So, you know, thirteen hundred more kids we could have at Wayne, in terms of our spaces, okay? All right. So the last portion of the study is the demographic and economic characteristics. And I won't spend a lot of time going over this tonight, but what it basically do is, it, it shows us how many, um, families we have, children we have, by race, by salary, um, by, you know, what kind of. what kind of homes they live in. The one thing that I would mention from this section that was interesting was the growth in terms of the number of households that are now becoming, or houses that are becoming rental properties in Wayne, right? Which signals, in some cases, a migrating population, right? So, you have families that will move in and then move out, right? As you have more rental properties, you might see some fluctuation here and there.
A lot of transient.
Right, the transient population. But that's kind of the, the big thing I noticed in that area. No surprises in terms of the demographic background of people who live in the area, basically. But he goes through all of the demographics for the county and then compares it to Wayne.
There again, some of the rental is, people can't sell their homes, they don't want to live in that size home.
Wait a minute, I have a question though about that. Because we've had pretty much, if you've lived here your whole life, we've had, you know, Union Health, we have, you know, the ones on the ridge, we have some of the, the trailers that are rental homes that are rented. But we have that brand-new apartment complex that just went in. So, I would think that that may be a big influx into what he's counting as rental. I don't see houses that are single houses being converted into.
Trailer areas, we see a lot of more rentals happening in those zones, a lot more, yeah. And these, some of these over there, I don't know, I believe some of the, most of these are owned townhouses, um, but.
No, they're all rental.
That's right, I saw the rental thing up, I apologize.
When you have a chance, I would, I would encourage you to go into the demographics and look very closely at the demographics. You will clearly see that the number of rental properties is increasing. And it probably is by the economic turn down from two thousand and eight and nine, but definitely the, the, a number of rental properties in the district is increasing.
But we're not having people who have a single-family house turn it into a double or something.
Some people are, yes, you do have some of that. Yes, you do, yes, you do, yes. You're, you're, because again, like we said earlier, as you, when you go back through the data, right? People are not able to sell their houses for what they wanted to sell them for, right? And some people are holding out, hoping, and you may make a little money off.
Is there a section in here around that you particularly want?
Well, no, I just, I would, I would.
Page through it, and you'll see.
I've already kind of looked at it.
Read through this very, very carefully and particularly to look at the enrollment projections and then the demographic data. How our population is aging, how the income parameters are changing, how the housing market is changing.
Page forty-four, uh, through really page fifty, fifty-six, we'll deal with a lot of those issues, a lot of those questions, rather. And then the economic characteristics, page fifty-five, shows you the salaries and those who have health insurance from those who, who do not, uh, those who are employed. Page fifty-eight deals a lot with housing units, um, renter occupied, um, you know. So, you see some, you see some growth there, right? Um, and then over to page, oh, fifty-nine, again, you can look at mortgages, uh, types of homes that we have. I will, I will say, Dr. Saversky and Dr. Exley, they tried to give everything they possibly could. Spent a lot of time on the study, um, okay? Tim?
On the bottom, page thirty-nine, talks about the closing of the plant.
Yes.
Um, for Gannay bringing financial challenges. It said, uh, they want to work with the county officials and Gannay officials to identify employees of the plant currently residing. So, that's something we can work with.
So, we have been, actually.
And, and they'll figure out where their workers live right now for us.
So, so we, we looked at our data because we wanted to know, what would the impact be? And Dr. Saversky wanted to know, what would the impact be? Very difficult to get some of that data because, so Gannay has to turn over to us people's names and addresses, and you got FERPA information in there, people don't want that stuff out there. So, we use our, what we, what we have currently is when people come in, they give us their work numbers. And some parents do give us their work addresses, some don't know, so they don't give us all that. So, we used our own data piece to find out, how many families are we talking about? We have about sixty-seven that we count. Six, sixty-seven, excuse me, not families, but sixty-seven children, excuse me, that we count. So, in terms of the number of families, we're still trying to determine exactly what, how many of those six, so there may be one or two or three kids who have, like Carrie has two kids in her house. So, we're trying to figure out, how many families is that actually, um, how many is that? But what we know is at least sixty-seven of our kids are connected, their families work with the power plant of our two thousand kids, basically.
Right, with, but without names, couldn't the plant help us out with, saying, you have this many families?
So, it's their data, sometimes they'll give it to you, sometimes they won't. We're working at it, right? And then some, even their people may not tell, tell them all the time where they do or don't, you know. But, but we, it's hard to get data from other companies from their employ, you know, people get crazy when you start, what are they gonna use my data for? That kind of a stuff. But, but we're, we're working to try to see what we can find from our own things. We know there might be a little bit more than what we have in our system, but we know the number is at least sixty-seven of our kids are connected.
It's not a scientific sample, but Mathis and I went to the power commission hearing last Thursday. And, um, I think there were about twenty people who testified. Uh, a lot of them were Gannay employees. None of the Gannay employees who testified lived in the school district.
Right, many live, right.
Really? Not a one?
Not a one.
Many, and, you know, Webster in the city, Penfield, yeah. A lot of them are younger families, childbearing age, who, they want the stainless steel stove and, you know, the cute stuff. But, so, this is this, that portion of the, the, the study board. And, um, so, you know, Dr. Saversky says he's gonna hold up a mirror and show us what the data, you know, is. And then we kind of come back and think through things. So, he'll be back soon and, uh, he will be coming with the program delivery portion to look at, based on enrollment, you know, what are we doing in terms of our programs? And he'll come back with some recommendations, uh, some options, rather, excuse me, that the board might want to consider. So, we'll have some of that stuff towards the end of June. Any questions, or are we good?
When you went through Mathis, what was the, was there something that stuck out?
Yes, uh, the, the main thing, page twenty, stuck out loud and clear to me, right? Because that shows that projected enrollment decline, right? So, what, what it says to me is that we need to, as Wayne, be as efficient as we can to make sure that, what we want to do is keep offering the great programs that we're offering, but we want to do it in a very efficient way, right? Um, when you have declining enrollment, um, you gotta be careful with what you spend and how you spend it. You want to make sure you make those decisions very wisely. And, you know, we want to, again, keep our eye on making sure that we demonstrate efficiencies for taxpayers, you know. When you, again, look at who's paying the bill. We gotta make sure that people know that we're, we're doing things like we really, we really need to, to make sure we're doing due diligence for taxpayers, so. Those are the two that really stuck out to me.
Twenty just got our budget, two to one. So, there's, up there of the people that voted, voted no.
I know we had about twenty perc, we had seventy, nearly seventy percent voted yes. So, you have, yeah, about thirty percent of the people.
And twenty-five percent of our people that live in our district are above sixty-five.
And they're usually the ones that vote no.
I didn't want to say that, but.
I don't want to say that.
I voted yes, not over sixty-five.
There you go, there you go. Well, with that, I am, I'm all set with, with this portion. I only wanted to mention, as we, as you get ready to move into the board business section. So, board, I, I put out some scenarios, really, for your, uh, feedback. I'm, I'm flexible, whatever you wish to, in terms of board meeting. Uh, you know, I'm not sure if you were able to see that, but I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to continue with every two weeks meetings, you could do three weeks. It's really up to whatever you wish to, board. I, 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 I'm like Normandy, right? I'm neutral. But I just, I'm, or, uh, offering some, some ideas. And, and so we, we look for your feedback, okay? Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is the board meeting schedule. To provide a forum for discussion, can we get a motion to, uh, adopt a board meeting schedule that would correspond with this year's and then use that as a discussion point? Can I have a motion to that effect? Dennis, a second. Pam? Okay, it's open for discussion.
I'm fine with whatever you guys just said.
I think that, uh, with the amount of things we have going on, I think we could, should stick what we have right now. Just with all the studies and all those things that we have to look at, I think, you know, it's a sufficient amount to get.
Got enough change going on.
Yes. When I, when I looked at this study and trying to digest what's in this study, just this study alone, and then we've got, uh, the enrollments coming, uh, we've got the transportation coming, we've got the finances coming, I think we're gonna need at least two meetings a month going forward. That's my personal concern.
Are we gonna do, you know, kind of what we did, you know, one in November, one in December, one in February, two the other times? Because wouldn't we add any other workshops and everything too?
I think we did one in August also, right?
We did one in August.
What about July?
We had the reorganization meeting in July.
When do we have our, uh, workshop or, uh, board retreat?
That's the eighteenth and the nineteenth of July. That's in addition to, to the organizational meeting.
And your, uh, one of the drafts, the one in blue, gives you pretty much what you just talked about right now, that, that has up there online for you.
Any other discussion, are we ready to, to put a two of them?
Just Mathis, the May meeting, the last, the second May meeting, what's the date on that?
Uh, May sixteenth, that's the budget vote.
Okay, and then is that second May meeting?
You have May, so you have three meetings, May fourth, May sixteenth, May twenty-fifth, um, are the three times. Really, May sixteenth is the budget vote, basically, so it's not really a.
Right, but then.
But, May fourth and May twenty-fifth is your two major time.
May twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a really hard time with that. Because that's, well, this year we did it a week, or a week early. This, this is that meeting.
Right.
Because there's, where I work, I've never been able to go because we always have a meeting that Thursday night. Can we change that last?
Ours is somewhat dictated by the, the parameters of the budget vote, but.
You, you can always.
Well, we had it this week, the same week as the budget vote. What I'm asking is, can we move it, the, what is it, the twenty-fifth? Can we move it to the same week as the budget vote? Like we did this week, we had the budget vote on Tuesday and we're here today.
It's gonna be maybe fifth, every two weeks. It's a two, we're on a two-week schedule, I think.
Okay. And we got, and we took into consideration the break and, and everything, right?
And board, you can, if you wish to, as, as you go forth, if you need to change the date or reconsider, you can do that.
It's all right, just maybe one, I guess, actually.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor, the two, two-meeting format? Opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda. We have a number of items under consent agenda. We have C, PSE, recommendations, minute meetings, personnel action, scholarship gifts, the health services contract for Penfield and East Roncoy School Districts. Can I get a motion to approve the consent? Matt, second. Carrie, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, committee reports, I don't know, we don't, I don't think any of our committees have, Matt, communications, Jerry?
Um, all we have is the June second, six o'clock here, and that will be the community roundtable, so the community can ask questions about all this.
June the second. Audit?
Yeah, well, we've had no meetings and I really didn't have, don't have a report, but I think I got the September, um, meeting date wrong. I think I put it on the first Tuesday, it should be the fifteenth, it's the Thursday in between. I think the date came out wrong. I, I happened to glance at that at one time and that just sticks out in my mind, that might be wrong.
Okay, Kathy, can we ask you to double-check that date for us?
I didn't hear what you said, that date.
I think, I can look, if you, if you want to hang on, just open my calendar and take a look. But I, my memory says that I put down the wrong number of the date for the Thursday in between our meetings, so. September, it should be the thirteenth and I think I wrote something other than that, or else it's October and it's wrong. Maybe it's October, October and it's wrong.
I think you only gave me one date. You only gave me a September date, you're saying.
Okay, it should be the fifteenth, what do you, should be the fifteenth.
Of September.
Of September. Right, there we go, that was in October, look at that, okay.
And policy committee? Under board president comments, I have just a couple of comments. I did attend the, uh, power commission hearing. I was able to, to present some testimony on behalf of Wayne Central. Mathis was there and also has the side, as was John Smith. It would appear to me, um, I'm very optimistic, it would appear to me that the power commission is designing a program that will shift the burden of keeping Gannay open from Argenee rate payers to keeping the upstate power plants, nuclear power plants open, to all the utilities in the state. That appears to be their plan and that plan would be in operation until two thousand and thirty. And by two thousand and thirty, they are hoping to have fifty percent of the power in the state come from renewable sources. Uh, in order to get to those carbon goals, they have to keep the, um, nuclear power plants open. They cannot substitute, um, gas-fired turbine power plants. So, I'm optimistic at, at this point, if, if the hearings go as, as, uh, as that particular one went. Second thing, I would like to thank the public for turning out to vote and to give us a positive budget vote. We did have seventy percent of our public who approved the budget. Having said that, I understand we had a little over two hundred no votes. That is typically about half of the number of no votes we get. However, our voter turnout was low compared to previous years. So, um, I think going forward, having looked at the demographics of this study and having looked at the fact that seventy percent of the people living in our school district do not have children in Wayne Central schools, that as we go forward, I think Mathis and, and Greg did an outstanding job putting our budget together and presenting our budget. But as a board, I think we need to be cognizant, reach out to those people who do not have children in school going forward in order to continue to have a positive, uh, budget votes. So, my hat's off to you gentlemen on the job you did in, in the process, particularly the process you followed and listening to the public and putting that budget together and getting public input, input into it and then, uh, the plan of, of sharing it, so. That's all I have. We do have a need to go into executive sessions to discuss the personnel matter and the contractual matter. I don't know how long will be an executive session. I do not anticipate that when we come out of the executive session that we will be conducting additional action. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to find that out, but I do not anticipate any action happening. So, can I get a motion to go into executive session? Carrie, a second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.